Thank you for listening tonight to county individuals. For myself, I live in the county because I chose to be there, as you all chose to move to the city where you serve. And for me, that's an important part, and I want to stay with the county.
I can't, I can't hear you.
You can't hear me at all? Okay, is that any better?
Yeah.
Okay. And I'm, okay, we'll go back. I chose to move to Riverside County for a very important reason. That's where I chose. And it, the problem I have when reading through the report, there's a lot of things that concern me. Where did these fifteen, fifteen hundred people come from that signed this petition? And were they, were they checked to make sure that they were adequately righteous to do this? There, there are so many things on this that doesn't seem appropriate and right, and definitely needs a lot of consideration for the future.
Next, Ms. Decker is Connie Corrados, followed by Roxanne.
Roxanne. Hello. Probably take the full three minutes, so I'm gonna talk fast. First of all, let me say I've not come up here with my pitchfork, as some may think, or have said. I've come here with my voice to voice my opinions and concerns. I was born and raised and lived here in the valley for fifty-one years. My kids were born and raised in this valley as well. I have previously lived in the city limits, and I currently own and live in an incorporated area for twenty-two years. I too, along with many others on both sides of this issue, love this valley and its people, our community. However, we all know that there is a governance difference between the city limits and the county areas. We have seen it and felt it for many years. The city provided a proposal for additional staffing, which is the hot topic, I'm sure. The police department would add a total of fifteen staff members, including ten sworn officers, five non. The fire department, with a new revenue, would allow the city to fund a two, a new two-person squad to attend to medical calls, plus fifteen additional sworn personnel. The public works department, in the proposed annexation area, there is approximately one hundred and twenty-three miles of paved road, one mile of unpaved. The public works would only add an additional five staff members. The added staffing in all these areas is already needed within the city, right now, before the annexation. The city would need those positions filled, and then more. The revenue will not come fast enough in to fill the positions in a timely manner. And it will start to fall short because more positions will be needed to fill a gap. Those one thousand eighty-nine signatures on a piece of paper did not speak for me or my family. It amazes me that that is all it took, one thousand eighty-nine signatures, to speak for over approximately twenty thousand people and make a change to their personal property. Personal properties that cost hundreds of thousands of dollars. Over nineteen people, I'm sorry, over nineteen thousand people did not have a say. Or maybe they did. They did not sign the petition. And it was not recorded that they did not sign a petition to be annexed. I was one of those people. I said, "No, thank you." But it was not documented. Kind of backwards for property owner rights, if I think, if I would have to say so. If the application goes to LAVCO, I will be one of the registered voters and landowners who will be filing a written protest. State law indicates that if a written protest is filed by twenty-five to fifty percent of the registered voters, or any amount greater than that, then election is to be called. That could be doable too, and the annexation would be scheduled for the vote. If the protest is less than twenty-five percent of voters of landowners, then the annexation is approved without election. If the protest is greater than fifty percent of the total registered voters, then the annexation is denied without an election. My hope is that this does not move forward, but if it does, I would hope that we would get greater than fifty percent in order to deny the annexation. The city of Hemet for many years has not been able to handle their own affairs and resources efficiently as it is. Adding additional responsibilities to the already increasing problems would be a detriment to those currently within the city limits, as well as those of us annexed in. The mismanagement throughout the years within the city speaks for itself. Giving the city more to govern than it has proven itself inept does not help the community. More revenue does not fix the mess. Thank you.
It's Ms. Roxanne Partita, followed by George Evans, Jr.
Hi there. Can you hear me? Okay, I've never spoken in public, so it's gonna be kind of messy. My name is Roxanne Partita. I live in the county. I've lived in the county for forty years. I've lived in my home for thirty-eight years. This annexation was started thirty years ago. We tore it down, did not go through, and we're gonna do it again. We do not want to be annexed. I don't know how much to make it any clearer. This is a, I feel that this is a money grab by whoever this Hemet United is. This is the first time I've ever heard of this. I never received a letter. I've received nothing. I know nothing about any petition being signed, because I'd have been the first to say no, because I will fight. The city of Hemet can't even manage its own, and now you want to bring us in? You can't even manage traffic. Have you seen the traffic at Sanderson in Florida? What about In-N-Out Burger? And you want some of us? No. We don't want to be there. We do not want to be with you. This, you're trying to make us into a town of Temecula. We don't want to be Temecula. We bought in the county for a reason. We have travel trailers that the city doesn't allow. We have little trailers that are not allowed. We're allowed four dogs. City's allowed three. I'm not getting rid of one of my animals for this. The city can't even manage to sync your traffic lights down Florida. You sit while the opposite lights go and the turn signals go. Nobody there. You just sit. So I hate to tell you, but the drivers are getting very creative to get around it, unfortunately. The city of Hemet has called itself a slum. It is documented on there. We have a depressed town. Instead, you've allowed these cement dividers down the things we can't get to the businesses. So now you have to go around and flip a U-turn. That doesn't seem safe, but that's what you've done. This is making it more difficult for us to get to the businesses. Hemet residents were asked their social concerns. Seventy-eight percent, they're concerned with homelessness. Okay? The homelessness has risen thirty percent. Still there. The significant majority of the homeless are Hemet residents. What are you doing? What are you doing to stop that? Is there housing? Is there rehab? Is there drug rehab? Is there mental counseling? Is there anything? I've seen nothing. The residents' next concern was forty percent housing and forty percent poverty. Twenty-five poverty, forty-five, twenty-five percent poverty rate in Hemet. What are you doing for these people? Are you giving them schooling? Are, are you, what are you, you gotta help these people. You can't expect the county to pick up this mess. We don't want it. We moved to the county for a reason, and we'd like to stay there. Crime has gone up thirty-three percent. Gun violence has gone up thirty-one percent, and the city's crime rate is forty-eight percent higher than the coun, than the national level. We don't want it. If you can't fix your problems, we don't want to be annexed in. I don't wanna say that.
Okay, that is previous.
Thank you. No on annexation.
Mr. George Evans, Jr., followed by Ms. Robin Love.
All right, thank you for the opportunity. I want to thank the council for all your efforts. Some of you are extremely reachable to get things resolved in a really reputable manner. But I've lived in the county for twenty years now, and I don't understand why a mailer wasn't sent out to the annexation map area, so all residents could have answered. Why is it only these fifteen hundred, or whatever the number actually is, that was reached out to? It sounds like it was a niche that they were trying to just get this to be on the agenda, because apparently the council didn't propose it. But again, you're, you're talking about annexing an area where you have one free, three fire stations, Engine Twenty-Six on Stamford, Engine Five, Hemet City, on Meridian, and then you have Engine Seventy-Two on Fairview, all within a three-minute response time to their locals. Okay? So you're gonna have to move Engine Five or one of those engines to account for the area out, on the outskirts. Talk of five thousand homes going out in the orange groves. That's the last stands of agriculture that the history of this community was built on, and you're gonna destroy it? Okay? Five thousand houses, at an average of four persons per family, is twenty thousand people. Where's the infrastructure to handle this? You don't have the police, you don't have the fire. You canceled going with CalFire eight years ago, maybe a little longer. All right? You, you, you look, what is the benefit for the county residents to salvage the city's problems? I agree with what has already been stated. The streets are in disarray. They need to be handled. I think that the council really needs to address its own problems within the city boundaries and clean up the city, so then, yeah, maybe then, we would entertain this. But what we're seeing right now, unfortunately, we don't want it. We don't want to bail the city out for its problems that it needs to resolve. Quit allowing dollar stores to come in here, discount stores, box stores that aren't the big-box stores. You know, where are the, the reputable restaurants? They don't want to come here. Years ago, Red Lobster wanted to come here. They wanted to be on Florida. No, the council back then said, "No, we want you on Stetson." Where's Red Lobster? They're not in Hemet. Again, it was said last night on that live feed that zoning won't change, but after it's annexed, zoning can change. So then the people who have farm animals and things like that, and, and properties that they want to maintain their livestock, again, zoning will change. So again, I, I think this is a no vote. It should have been, if it was gonna be recognized, a mailer should have been sent out by this unified group to every resident that's gonna be affected in the county.
Sir, that's three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Robin Love is next, followed by Mr. Stephen Burton.
Good evening, council. I had the pleasure of being chairman of LAVCO when this came before us years ago. And the same arguments I'm hearing tonight, I heard before. Unfortunately, I would say the benefits of being in the city have not been exa, I don't think they've been exaggerated, but I don't think they've been explained either. And so I've talked to some people, my phone rang today, and a lot of people don't quite understand. And perhaps a workshop would be in order in the future, if you decide not to move forward. However, as a former LAVCO member, this has always penciled. Is it benefit, bottom line, to the residents there? Unfortunately, emotion gets involved, and it takes off. And so I might suggest that you, in the future, have a workshop with the people out there in the county before it's brought forward to agenda. I think it would, it would answer a lot of their questions and their concerns. I do believe that it eventually will happen. If you don't decide to move forward tonight, I do believe it's good for all concerned. And God bless you.
Mr. Stephen Burton, Burton, followed by Ms. Angela Scott.
All right, good evening, council, community, mayor. This is also my first time at anything like this, so I did make a couple of notes, but they were more lean towards questions as to what would happen. Me being a business owner of the Burton Ranch, a local farmer's market, and the county, not in the, city of Hemet, what would happen with business owners like ourselves? Would we be grandfathered in? Would we have to get new licenses, new permit fees, new farmer's market fees? I mean, I've been hit with permits from producer certificates to broadcasting music licenses to run a farmer's market. So curious on that. Fifteen, twenty years ago, even less, there's been the annexation that's been brought up before, lots of development out in the area, lots of roads to be paved. In this report, it says one hundred and twenty-four miles, one of them's not paved. In Diamond Valley alone, there's at least five miles that are unpaved. I'm wondering if those would get paved, who would pay for them, and who would pay for the other one mile of road that's not paved now? Water lines, sewer lines, would we be required to connect to a sewer system? Would we be required to abandon our septic systems? All of this, and then who would pay for that? Because that's all a lot, a lot of money. Land use, they stated it won't change. As of right now, my land use zoning is A1. On the map, on attachment eight, it already shows we would be designated rural residential. So just curious on, as someone stated, once we are annexed, you know, there's the new general plan coming up in 2030 update. How would that go? Would we be zone changed there? Would we come into more high residential, community development, things like that? Thanks for letting me speak. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Angela Scott, followed by Natasha.
Hi, thank you for having me. This is also my first time speaking at one of these. I'm here to support my communities of Sage and to stick up for the wildlife that's in our community as well. I was born in the Hemet Hospital, and I've been in Sage for about ten years. I like being out there, because Hemet's gotten quite busy and it's quite different than the eighties when I grew up here. But one of my concerns is I live a few miles up from where it's gonna be annexed, and behind me is miles of building and land management land that has been designated for the kangaroo rats. And so I don't, I just found out about this last week, so I don't know what they have in store for that, but I assume it's track homes, right? And because of the track homes that have been built in Winchester, we've already, the coyote population has quadrupled where we're at, so it's just gonna keep pushing them, like where will the coyotes go, where will the bobcats go, and the kangaroo rats? Also, we only have one police officer. We had like a, a development wanting to come in, and the questions were, what, how are we gonna fix that issue? But, because there's only one police officer for Sage, Alonga, Anza, and Idowild, and the traffic is already pretty bad for the people going the back way to Temecula, so how is that gonna affect the traffic? Like, what are they willing to put into the streets? And we also have a lot of problems with trash dumpers, where they want to annex it in Sage. Like, it's a huge problem, but like, the community comes together and picks up that trash, and we try to look out and stuff. So, you know, I just want to say I'm against the annexation. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Natasha, followed by Marcy Burkey.
Hi, good evening, mayor, council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm gonna jump around a little bit. I'm, oh, sorry.
There you go.
I was gonna jump around a little bit, but in a nutshell, what I'm here for is more for information, in order to make an informed decision. And I do not think that the city of Hemet has provided enough information to make an informed decision on the pros or cons, starting with, the petition that was originally filed was back in 2020 for the consent for the petition to be circulated. An application hasn't even been submitted, and has the city of Hemet even verified that the original petitioner is still alive? And if that original petitioner is still not, is not alive, is this petition, or the consent for the petition, even valid for what's on the agenda tonight? So I don't know if there's been due diligence on the city of Hemet's part to verify the, yeah, if the petitioner is even with us anymore. And how will that affect, if that petitioner is not with us, how does that affect this whole process right now with the annexation? And then, second, with the report of, I guess if this does move forward, and the city of Hemet, you know, continues to proceed with exploring the annexation, with the financial analysis, I'm concerned that we aren't, there's not transparent communication. It says that there would be a surplus of over fourteen point something million, which is misleading, because when you take into account the suggested thirty-seven new employees, that I think accounts for eleven point two million, so it leaves three million. Then it's allocated three million for maintenance of roads, and like Steve Burton mentioned, in the Diamond Valley area, there's more than one mile of unpaved road that's gonna require paving, and that's only in the Diamond Valley area. In the analysis, you guys only mentioned one unpaid road. There's no mention of additional pavement. What is that gonna cost to the city to maintain those paved roads in these rural areas, given the weight of tractors, trailers, et cetera? I don't think that the city really has taken into account in their financial analysis, really, the understanding of a rural community, and the impact and the cost of maintaining that community and the culture of that community. Along with, so let's take away that three million dollars that's for the maintenance, it was not reported what the liability insurance is gonna be. So if you take the fourteen million point whatever, take away the eleven for the expenditures for staffing, you're left with the three million dollars, which now goes into the maintenance. You're left with seventy thousand dollars. That does not take into account already the liability insurance. And then now, as of yesterday, CalFire just updated their high-fire risk map. If you overlay that map with a sphere of influence for the city of Hemet and what they want to bring in for the annexation, those two match up. Has the city of Hemet incorporated, again, this analysis is from 2022, we're three years in, with the data looking different. Has the city of Hemet pulled those numbers to see the cost that it's gonna take to maintain those high-risk factors? And will you guys have enough resources to maintain a fire department to assist in those areas? Based on, again, the audit control from a few years ago, where the city of Hemet was taken off for a high risk, areas that still were pending or not yet met approval was the pension, funding the pension, which the city of Hemet did create a trust to distribute, I think it's up to fifteen percent of surplus revenue?
Ma'am, I think you're, you're over through that. Sorry.
Am I over? Okay. But
Thank you for your comments.
I just need more transparent communication in how Hemet's gonna budget, and, yeah, take care of the annexation. Thank you.
Very interesting. Ms. Marcy Burkey, followed by Chuck Benson.
A lot of what I had to say has been said by other members, and I will go with the expense part right here. In 2010, an annexation was proposed for Hemet, and it was determined that it was a money loser for Hemet. The expense report from there, for this one, for twenty-five fifty-nine, says eleven million dollars for staff. Back then, in 2010, it says twelve point three nine million. So how does that change with the cost of inflation over the past fifteen years? And how does that affect what's going forward, and how is that report accurate? And then, as far as the voters, the signatures that are on there, those are three years old, as of March thirty-first, and it was certified in April, on April fourth, and that is also four years old when it was submitted to, or three years old when it was submitted to LAVCO. And then, in the last nineteen hours, we have four hundred and twenty-one citizens that have posted on, or had joined thechange.org and signed that petition. So that shows you right there, there's a lot of interest in not moving forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Chuck Benson, followed by Ms. Lori Powers.
Hi, council. My name is Chuck Benson, and this for information. My family came in nineteen-ten to Hemet, and my grandpa was the first fire chief, and I was the first paramedic in Hemet. And I have a problem with this annexation of the area where I live, along Gibble Road, because there's a lot of dirt roads out there, and it's never been even graded by the county. Anyway, I'd like to know how this fifteen hundred people that signed this, who were they? Where'd they come from? Who gave them, who talked to them? I had no idea where this came from. I was never asked anything. And Hemet City's having a lot of difficulties right now. Look at the homeless you hear in town. You need to take care of that. They're being dropped off daily, and, you know, what are you doing about this? Yesterday, I saw a fight downtown. A man was beating the heck out of a girl. And it's, the homeless is being unbelievable. Did you guys okay for everybody to get dropped off here? Roads in Hemet, potholes everywhere. Chambers has never been lined. There's roads that currently have been taken care of, and they're perfect roads. Why do you pick those roads? Not the roads that really need to be picked on? The police department, you know, they're being stressed to the max. But how are you gonna give them more people to take care of, more area? They can't do that. Same with the fire department. Give them one more crew for nine-one-one response? That ain't gonna happen. You need at least three or four more crews, even now, with this response that they're having. You need people to get out there and help people. And again, who are these fifteen, fifteen hundred people that signed this petition that wants to annex all this property? And it's a big area. How can you do that? How can you maintain it? Right now, there's no way you can do that. The people that, who signed this thing, I don't think they're real. I think they're made up. And I think that you need to look at this situation a lot better than what you're doing at, because it's not gonna work. And I've lived in the county all my life. I live, my house, it's seventy-three in the county, and I do not want to live in city limits, period. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Lori Man Harzdar, followed by James Phillips.
Thank you, council. I do want to thank you for hearing us and for hearing this item tonight. I think it's important that all of this information get out, and that, you know, especially, everybody's concerns are important. There's been many valid points here tonight, but there's been a lot of information that I think is miss, is not correct. For example, one gentleman talked about the fact that the city, it sounded like the city was proposing the Citrus Estates project, which it is not. And I think that is what riled up a lot of people in East Hemet, some are here, some may not be, is because the county is able to go ahead and push through projects with very little information that comes down to the public. And that's what the people that I've talked to want to have, is some local control, so that when these kind of projects come up, you will have a representative on the council to go to, and the whole council to go to, but also you won't have to go all the way to Riverside, or things get decided like the homeless project that's out there, that CityNet was doing, out between the two mobile home parks, or just past the mobile home parks on Florida Avenue to the south, without any public input. And so now that there's been an uprising about it, they are, they are backing off and trying to change the way it is, but it's still a homeless project adjacent to Senior Mobile Home Park. So I, I know that this has come before council a number of times. It came before council many, many years ago when I was there, and there's a lot of information that needs to be vetted, and it needs to be figured out, and would appreciate the city taking a good, hard look at it to see if it makes sense, because there are some benefits to having the fact that the city and the county area is, is one, so that when we come before many things, like grants, other things that are government-issued, there is, there's a bigger stronghold that you can take care of when it comes to validating why you deserve it. The other thing is the roads. City of Hemet has gone way beyond that, that, that they have in a long time in fixing roads. The county finally has been out there doing fourteen million dollars worth of work in the last three years, and we appreciate that, but that went not done for many, many years. So again, I hope that what you do is you gather good information, you have town hall meetings with, with everybody out there, and that we have people that can get their input in, and also be able to answer these questions quickly and with good, solid facts, both from the county and from the city. And I appreciate you having this meeting once again.
Thank you, Ms. Man Harzdar. James Phillips, followed by Jenny Hess.
Hi, it's ob, I had a nice prepared speech, but it's obvious that a lot of these people have no idea where, where to get information, all right? The, the original fifteen hundred signatures were, was paid by, was paid for by the original Hemet United, and they were paid canvassers that went into the neighborhood and got those signatures. I have a copy of the, of the petition that they submitted to the LAVCO, all right? And it took them twice to do that, because of the number of, that were ineligible, all right? At that time, the Hemet United, at least three of the board members were the very At that time, the Hemet United, at least three of the board members were the very wealthy here in Hemet, Dr. Chadry, Eric Gosh, and who's the last guy here? Tim Moran, not Tim Moran, sorry, John Petty, all right? I believe that's why Hemet United is now Hemet Unified, all right? Because obviously Dr. Chadry left a bad taste in a lot of people in this room's mouth, all right? Especially with his, with his mess with the hospital, all right? The, as far as why they, they decided to go to Sage and try and annex out there, the reason is because Chadry is also trying to build a four hundred and forty acre development at Mesa and East Benton, all right? In addition, all right, so between that, the Galway petition, and they'll have a nice corridor all the way through into Temecula, into wine country, all right? There's a, there's a reason why they, why they want this particular thing to go through, all right? They're developers, they intend to make money off of this, and they're not, they're not going to back off until they get something passed, all right? That's why in the, in the petition that, that they said this must go to LAFCO, you guys are cut out of the loop. They're not even allowing you to, to speak, other than at the LAFCO meeting, they said that the presentation will be all done by Hemet Unified. You know, it says specifically right in their petition, and the only thing they want from you are numbers, all right? So they are going to make their own presentation and hope that that goes through. Those fifteen hundred were just, were, were, were paid. That's nonsense, all right? The, as far as the, the area itself, that had, that's been since 2022, I believe. They, I was at one time president of the Sage Community Council. We, we had to get this from a totally different source, all of this information, because it wasn't provided to anybody in Sage that's outside of the actual annexation area, all right? That's an unincorporated area that is in the master plan for Riverside County. That's nonsense, all right? If these guys, you know, these three wealthy people decide that they can run Hemet, let them run for office, all right? Thank you.
Next speaker is Ms. Jenny Hess, followed by Joseph Scarf.
First of all, thank you for your service and for your time and for the very timely prayer, because I think being calm and mutually respectful is a little hard when people are feeling under attack. I've lived here for two years. Next week, I deliberately chose to move here, but I did spend twenty-five years in a community in unincorporated Ventura County battling annexation into the city of Thousand Oaks. So what I learned through that process is it's very lengthy, there's a lot of information, and you really don't know anything until you sit down and you talk about it. So on that note, I discovered this at midnight. I, I learned what I could until two. I'm running on maybe nine waking hours dealing with this information. So I appreciate the mayor's proposal to have heard us tonight and then for you to take the responsibility to take all of this input back and think about it thoughtfully. I think that was a good plan. Because I don't even know how I feel about it yet, because I don't have any of the information. And social media told me today that a lot of people have a lot of questions, a lot of answers, and they have a lot of bad experiences that need to be talked about. This needs town halls, it needs a committee, there's just too many Q and A's. Some of the stuff that I saw today, address change, this is an elderly aging community. I don't even want to tell you the experience of explaining to my husband, we aren't going to have a landline anymore, right? So this is small things, but there's large things too. I love my trash people, I come from LA, street sweeping is a scam, I have PTSD from it, I like to sweep my own gutters, there's a lot of little details, there's also big ones. There is some positive. Our income per capita would rise, our demographic would rise, and we would have better options because I was not here for the chick who I pop up. We need healthier options for our community. The numbers in the proposal are outdated and they're rather minimalistic for such an important topic. I'm going to need more than a couple of quick and dirty Excel sheets to make a decision about something like this. So this is going to require some deliberate, transparent, thoughtful conversation, and again, to the mayor's point, with all of the stakeholders, because there's new people, there's older people. I haven't lived here since nineteen-ten, but I really do love it like I did, right? So you need to take advantage of what all of the stakeholders have to say. If you don't take the time to have those deliberate, thoughtful conversations, this is just going to fall down again at LAFCO. And from what I've heard and what I've seen, it's going to die and revive and die and revive, and there's no point to that. Just have the conversations you need to have now. A lot of people are clearly against it. Again, I'm on the fence, I don't know everything I need to know, I just know that I need to know more. So I appreciate your time and I hope you do consider approaching this entire situation in a little bit more organized and transparent fashion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Joseph Scarf, followed by Sean Murphy.
Hello, my name is Joe Scarafoni, I live in Val Vista. This is page one thirteen through one thirty-six of the four hundred and fifty-page Hemet budget, which is on the website for fiscal year twenty-four, June twenty-four through The city has fallen short on its budget, really missed the mark last year. I'm not sure how much reliance we can place on any of your forecasts. For example, year ended June thirty, twenty twenty-four, the county, the council estimated one hundred and forty-eight million revenue, but only came in at ninety-seven million. Similarly, council initially forecasted two hundred and twenty million in expenditures, but came in at one hundred and one million. Either way, the council estimated and realized more expenditures than, than revenue in twenty twenty-four. In the current year, council is estimating one hundred and forty million revenue and one hundred and forty-three million expenditures, better than last year, but still deficit spending. And I also don't have confidence in these estimates, given the big misses last year's. These are initial impressions, as I only found out about this last night from my wife, who was on Facebook, and I'm going to need to further examine the budget to really get an idea, but to me, it really seems like they're, they've just completely given poor estimates and budget calculations, and it's just really converging on deterioration in the fund balance. And I, I see it like a lot of people do, as a land, a land grab for revenue and the developers who want to have local control over local politicians so they can build stuff that nobody wants. And as far as the citrus development's concerned, I believe we've kind of shut that down, but like that would be insanity, because I live in Val Vista and six thousand homes out there? I mean, are you kidding me? There's no way you're going to move that kind of traffic. It's already bumper to bumper. When I moved here in ninety-six, it took me twenty-seven minutes, thirty minutes maybe, to get from here to Temecula to work. Now it's, you know, in traffic, it's an hour and forty minutes sometimes. It takes me forty minutes to get to the freeway on a bad day. On a good day, it's, you know, twenty minutes. So it, it, to me, it's just really a land grab, and I wasn't notified. Nobody sent me a letter. And so without knowing the law and what your requirements are, I mean, are you opening yourselves up for some sort of legal action? I, I don't know, and I thank you for letting me speak, and I think you're going to hear a lot more about this from everybody. I'd like to organize protests, as we did when they tried to subcontract out the police department and the fire department. We were ganged up out here on the streets, everybody came out. If anybody wants to join me, my email is joescarfoni@hotmail.com, or you can talk to me in the back. Thank you.
Can you spell Scarafoni, please? I can't spell it.
Okay, next speaker is Sean Murphy.
Followed by Dennis Fuller. Good evening, Council. Thanks for being here tonight. This is a very important topic for sure. I've been in the valley, worked in the valley for twenty-plus years, and I think it's very important for us to hear all sides and get that information, so that the unincorporated areas and the city can make an informed decision, so that we can find out what's best for everybody, so we can have a plan to unite this whole valley. Thank you.
Thank you. Last speaker on the annexation matter is Dennis Fuller.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Dennis Fuller. I was born and raised in this town fifty-one years ago. I've seen it go up and down, and right now it's down. It, Hemet can't even take care of its own streets, let alone the homeless, the crime that goes around, being born and raised in this town, from the generation I'm from, that's sad. That is completely sad. Everybody in this room should be completely sad about that. I don't know why. So do you think I want that, being in the annexed area? I live up off of Gibble Road, up by Chuck. Chuck's my wife's uncle. It's ridiculous that you guys would even think about bringing this in and to have more homes out in Vala Vista and then supposedly they're, I don't know if anybody knows, they're going to try and push Gibble all the way through to Fairview. Do you guys even know how much money infrastructure like that costs? I build schools for a living. That's what I do. It costs millions and millions and millions of dollars that this city does not have. Like, you guys have no clue, the housing that they're putting in, what it costs. You know, some of you guys might, but it's, it's unreal. So to have all these new homes go in and then to bring us in to help bail you guys out, that's ridiculous. You know, I, I feel you guys are going down a bad road with this completely. You guys need to clean out your closets, get this town back to where it needs to be, where it was years ago. Why everybody here came to this town, loved this town, that's the reason we're all here, because we care about it, but we want to take a look and make sure it's going in the right direction. It's not. We have small businesses, I have business friends that own town, or businesses here in the town. Those guys, they do everything they can to beautify the town, but then code enforcement comes and busts them, you know, and tells them they can't go out there weed whack, they can't put rock down, they can't do this. Then you go to AMPM, that's by Lowe's, their sign's been down for the last two months, I think it has? Really? You know, but we allow that. Come on, you guys, time to wake up, you know? You need to, like I say, clean out your closet and start looking at what's going on in this town itself. So, thank you, guys, I appreciate your time.